Well, I show it is six o'clock and I'd like to welcome you all to a regular meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council, May 17th, 2016. We start off our meetings with an invocation and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Our invocation is given by Pastor Tom Martin from the Life Church. Tom, if you could please stand unless you prefer not to join us.
And Pastor Michael Hurley was called out of town unexpectedly and asked me to come and bring the invocation. It's an honor to be here, so if you bow your heads, we'll pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you in Jesus' name. We thank you for this day and the leadership opportunities, both individually and corporately, that you provide as this city council meets this evening. We pray your blessing upon the city of Oak Harbor, including the Naval Air Station located here in Woodby Island in the beautiful northwest. We pray specifically for Mayor Bob Severance, Mayor Pro Tem Danny Pagau, the city council members Rick Almberg, James Campbell, Beth Muntz, Tara Hyzen, Erica Wassinger, and Joel Servatius. Be with them, Father, and guide their decisions this evening. Also be protective of our city service members, the Oak Harbor Police and Fire Departments, both men and women serving, and our schools with the teachers and students, and of course and especially the citizens of Oak Harbor. Father, we thank you for the Naval Air Station, its leadership, and your blessing on the many interactions that our city has with this military presence. We pray not only for your protection but your direction for all those you have placed in positions of authority and high responsibility within this city, the city of Oak Harbor, Washington. Thank you for all the decisions that will positively impact and benefit the citizens of Oak Harbor, and we ask it all in the glorious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, you may now be seated. So it looks like we've got a full council this evening, and we'll start with item number one, approval of the agenda. Any changes? Seeing none? Yes, Councilman Campbell.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion to accept the agenda as presented by Councilman Campbell, second by Councilman Servatius. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number two, presentations, and we've got a couple tonight. Counselor Muntz is going to the stand, and I think it looks like we've got a great group from NAS Woodby.
I'm sure it's interesting. Get closer, we want the camera to have a good shot of you guys. We are very fortunate tonight to have the cream of the crop from NAS Woodby Island, our probably closest neighbor or on either side of the city. We have the commanding officer Jeff Moore. We have AM 2 Melody Woolley, she is Sailor of the Quarter. And we have MA 1 Andre Billingsley, Senior Sailor of the Quarter.
The MS and Casey.
Okay. He's the Blue Jacket of the Quarter. And then we have the Junior Sailor of the Quarter, which is ET 3 Kyle Wilson.
Yes.
These men and women behind us, the Senior Sailor of the Quarter, while serving as the Security Department Legal Petty Officer, he expertly managed 206 individuals over three law enforcement installations. His direct involvement in the enclave project enclosed the entire airfield with four automatic vehicle access gates and three infrared closed-circuit visual systems. Melanie Woodley, while serving as Honor Guard Leading Petty Officer, she trained 72 sailors for 53 events totaling over 300 man-hours. In addition, she coordinated 155 active-duty funerals in Oregon and Tacoma with zero discrepancies. The Junior Sailor of the Quarter, Wilson, assisted a team of seven other sailors. He dedicated 210 corrective maintenance hours on a primary position approach radar V-block alignment and a primary precision approach radar reflector resulting in a critical system alignment. And AMS in Lima, Blue Jacket Quarter, he demonstrated his unsurpassed demonstration. He holds both patrolman and red-for-issue qualifications. In addition, he coordinated a watch schedule for over 100 auxiliary security forces personnel and enhanced the relationship with law enforcement agencies with the Puget Sound Region. So this is just some of the sailors, but at the end, we can give them a hand of applause. But this is really the cream of the crop, living as our neighbors and our friends, helping us in the community. Proclamation. The freedom and security that citizens of the United States enjoy today are direct results of the bloodshed and continued vigilance given by the United States Armed Forces over the history of our great nation. The sacrifices that such members of the United States Armed Forces and of the family members that support them have preserved the liberties that have enriched this nation, making it unique in the world community. The United States Congress in 2004 passed a resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, calling all Americans to remember those who gave their lives in defense of freedom, to honor the men and women of all our armed services who have served and are now serving our country together with their families. Our community is so closely aligned with the men, women, and families, Naval Air Station Woodby Island, Electronic Attack Wing, Patrol and Reconnaissance Wing 10, and all 10 commands. The month of May is selected for display of patriotism because during the month we celebrate Loyalty Day, Public Service Recognition Week, Victory in Europe VE Day, Military Spouse Appreciation Day, and Armed Forces Day, and Memorial Day. Now, therefore, I, Bob Severance, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Oak Harbor in the state of Washington, do whereby proclaim the month of May 2016 as National Military Appreciation Month in the city of Oak Harbor and encourage all citizens to acknowledge and its observance and witness of. Thank you very much.
Mayor, Council, Beth, thank you very much for reading that. It says out front that you're America's premier naval community, and I truly believe that. And we just were named the best naval installation of all the Navy around the world, and we would not have been able to do that without the appreciation and support that you give me, just not in May, but every single day. And I really appreciate that, and I'm honored to bring our best here to receive this honor. So thank you very much, Mayor, Council.
Thank you, Captain, and to the rest of you, we want you to know that we appreciate from all of our, the bottom of our heart, your service to our country. We thank you, we thank you every day, and for being a part of our community, being great neighbors and great partners. So thank you all. Okay, we've got proclamation in recognition of National Public Works Week, and that week is May 15th to the 21st, and Mayor Pro Tem Pagau will read that.
Hello, Kathy.
And we have our Public Works Director, Kathy Rosen, to receive it.
And with me here by the podium is Public Works Director Kathy Rosen to receive this proclamation. And this proclamation is recognition of National Public Works Week, May 15 to 21, 2016. Whereas, public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, storm drains, streets, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. And the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff our public work department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And this year's theme, community begins here, speaks to the essential nature of public work services in support of everyday quality of life. Now, therefore, Bob Severance, Mayor, and council members of the city of Oak Harbor do hereby proclaim May 15 to 21, 2016 as National Public Works Week. Signed, the 17th day of May, 2016, Bob Severance, Mayor.
Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to thank you on behalf of all of the public work staff, and I, as part of our Public Works Week, we would like to invite the community to our Public Works Family Fun Day on Saturday, May 21st, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Windjammer Park. It's going to be a casual opportunity to learn about the services that Public Works provides and to learn about the progress on our clean water facility that's under construction in that area, and also the Windjammer Integration Plan. We'll have some of our equipment down there to demo, we'll have informational booths and activities for kids, and we're hoping that many people will attend. So thank you.
Well, Director Rosen, I'll tell you that you're a little bit like NAS Woodby to us. We rely heavily on you every day, so tell, please tell your staff thank you for all of our hard work.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
You would indulge me, Kathy, sorry, you're not getting out of here that easy. This is fortuitous, because I was just having a conversation today here at City Hall. I was talking to Deena, we were talking about the marathon and all the work that goes into doing that, and I started thinking about every other event that I could think of. And I've had people comment to me about, wow, Public Works is, you know, they're out there, and it's early, and it's late, and it's a Sunday, and it's whatever. And I think your department especially is one of those that doesn't hear much unless something goes wrong. It's really, really under-recognized, but I can't think of a single thing that happens in this community that, I mean, you guys handle every sign and every trashcan and every flower pot and literally all the things. And so it's noticed, people do notice, and they tell me. So in case they don't tell you, I promised to pass that along a couple times recently. So thank you and everybody from this council member.
Thank you. We really do like to kind of keep a low profile. We know we're doing our jobs when people don't have to think about us.
That's a good point.
So thank you.
Thanks so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, you bet. Before we go on to the next item, number three, I need to back up to the approval of the agenda. I forgot to ask you to add an executive session, and I would like to, I don't know, we amend the, we wouldn't amend it, we'll just, I would propose just adding an executive session to discuss the performance of a public employee under RCW 423110G to the end of this meeting. So I think we need a motion to do that. Yes, Counselor Servatius.
Thank you. I move to add an executive session to discuss personnel issues. I don't remember.
The performance of a public employee under RCW 423110.
Exactly. Thank you.
Second. So we've got a motion, okay, motion by Councilman Servatius, second by Councilman Campbell, to add an executive session to discuss the performance of a public employee under RCW 423110. Any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Now, back to presentations, I think we're actually at item number three, citizen comment period. Citizens may comment on subjects of interest not listed on the agenda or items listed on the consent agenda. To ensure comments are recorded properly, state your name clearly into the microphone. Please limit comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. Now, I didn't get any on the list, but this would be time, I'm asking verbally if we, anybody wants to make citizen comment? Going once? Twice? Okay. On to the consent agenda, item number four, we've got, it looks like A through D, and if there are no objections, the consent agenda will be adopted as is. Item number five, city administrator comments. Dr. Merriman.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just to go over our next few meetings that we have coming up, tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. at Regency, we have the Oak Harbor Fire Department and Oak Harbor Police Department recognition. Just so you know, we've gone ahead and done a notice of attendance for that in case we end up with a quorum. We're covered there. So again, that is at Regency tomorrow evening at 6:00. Next week, we'll have our regular monthly workshop, that'll be at 3:00 on Wednesday, the 25th, if you want to check your calendars for that one. And then, of course, then we'll go into the month of June, and we'll have a regular scheduled meeting that first week. One thing I did want to let you know is we have the AWC Conference in Everett, the week of, it'll be June 21st through 24th. And you probably have already been contacted by the amazing Nikki Tesh to get your reservations and those things in, so we'll be getting that wrapped up for you and have packets to you for that and get that on your calendars as well. We'll notice that meeting as well. Also for the month of June, Deena Emery has been working very hard putting together the numbers on the marathon, and we're getting our final invoices paid and attendance figures and those added out. So if you were curious, we'll have those coming most likely sometime around that first meeting in June, if we can't get any earlier than that. But we're all kind of looking forward to see what the results of that event were from a business standpoint. And that's all that I have for this evening. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I looked over and saw Joel looking at me like, no, you don't, there's one more to go here. So I do have Joel here to give us an update on the clean water facility.
Okay.
Mayor, council members, I'll just excuse Doug for forgetting me for the moment, but that's okay. Got to have some fun. So I got a relatively brief update on things, try not to bore you too much, there'll be time for questions at the end if you have some. As soon as I press the next slide, there'll be a little video of what's gone on for the next month, for the last month, I mean, I'm not predicting the future just yet, but it's been a lot of work. You can see they're taking the grade down, and they're leaving a portion of it, I'm going to point right over Nikki's head, they're leaving this bench here, you'll see that that's where the headworks is going to go, the deepest part of it. And back in this corner, you'll see them start building a little pad for where the crane's going to go. And it's about 140 yards of concrete are going to go, have gone in there. Is there a way to go back to that last stand slide, or anyway? Well, long and short of it, there's the first stick of, the crane is being embedded, and concrete poured around it tomorrow. So that's a really good start, and I guess I'll go through my slides so I don't forget anything. I tend to skip over things and jump around if I don't do that. So GMP number four, which is Site Preparation Package B, the deep excavation, we're kind of winding down on that one a little bit. We've installed some de-watering sump in a corner, so any water that enters the site has some place to go to and be pumped out into the baker tanks that are sitting there on the side of City Beach Street. They installed a ramp to move equipment to the headworks bench, so they're moving the access around to get in and out of the hole as they need to work. GMP five, the BioSolids System, Harslaw submitted their Electrical Instrumentation and Control Submittal. I haven't talked a lot about this one in the past, but this was kind of a milestone for that part of the project. It's still moving along is the point. We're working with the Harslaw to get what we need from them to incorporate that into the design. GMP six, the Micro piles, Condon Johnson drilled 10 exploratory borings to further examine the gravel layer below the glacial till. What we found, when we talked about this early, the borings that we did with the Geotech, they found this nice glacial till, 70 feet down or so, well, they went completely past it and into a gravel layer below it, that because of the elevation of it, it was actually pumping water back out at about 15 gallons a minute. So we went back and have been working with the contractor to evaluate some different means and methods, and we've come up with something just here this morning on how to square that away and keep us moving forward. We're going to shorten up, as it turns out, the micro piles are adhering better than we thought, so we can shorten up the depth we go into the till, and therefore we don't go into the gravel. So that's the short story, and then I'll also get really geeky on you. So the southwest corners where the tower crane's gone, it's, I'm real excited, they're getting all set for that to be installed. The deep foundation, which is the concrete work that Hoffman's going to self-perform, they're turning in submittals and getting ready for that work. I think we're planning on starting that in July. And if you haven't already seen it, I've worked with Kristofferson over at the high school, and some of the high school art club kids came out and painted on the side of one of the tanks, a kraken with a kind of a neat theme to it. I believe there's plans for them, they're, the original drawing showed it stretching across both tanks. I don't think they had a scale of how big it was, so I think they're going to come back and do something different on the other tank that goes along with the theme. So we've been working with them to keep the kids involved. I think it's really important to have the kids involved in what's going on with a project like this. They have a stake in it at that point, they understand or want to learn more about what it's about, and later on down the line, when it becomes a reality, they can say they had a part in it. And so I'm going to try in other ways to help include the high schoolers in this so that we can have that investment, not only in our kids but in the future. So over the next six weeks, in the deep excavation, we're going to finish spreading the quarry spalls around over top of some geotextile fabric and get ready to start installing the micro piles. The crane's going to start being erected on the 23rd through the 25th, three days, that's next Monday, and from the bottom of the base to where the hook is, 125 feet, and to the top of the mast is 165, to give you a scale on it. So it's going to be slightly shorter than that in reality because it's down in the hole, but you get the idea it's going to stand out. So earlier, Kathy already mentioned Public Works Week, Family Fun Day, this, we figured it's from 10 to 2, right around by the windmill. We're going to have a bunch of the Public Works trucks combined with a couple of construction vehicles, so you can tie the two together, you know, you build something, you've got to take care of it. And we're going to have a little pathway for kids to, so they have to, you know, stop for a flagger, do a T-tour, make eye contact with the truck driver before they cross on the crosswalk and, you know, so, you know, and they get stickers for their little, for their hard hats and stuff, so I'm looking forward to it. I hope the weather holds up for us. Windjammer Park Integration Plan, and I don't know why I left Project Office on that, just forget that, but the 24th, if I had Steve out here, I hope I'm saying this right, yep, 24th is an update to the Planning Commission, 25th is an update to City Council. And so that'll be where we report back to you what we've learned from our citizen advisory group and the public about the park integration plan, should be a really interesting topic to go over. I've been watching it all along, standing in the shadows, and it's been a really interesting process. It's been fun, a lot of good people. And there's our project timeline, nothing really has changed other than the red lines moved over a couple ticks to the right, and I'll keep you up to date on that as we move forward. It's also in your packet if you want to take a closer look. And as always, if you have questions about it, you can give me a call, or Brett, Brett would know it as well as I would, if not more so. And as always, my favorite last slide that never changes, the oakharborcleanwater.org, if you want more information on the site, on the project, there's a library of just about everything we've done, 914-7000, if you need to get ahold of us, see something goofy going on down there that you don't understand, or there's, you know, anything you want to know about the project, that's a good one to call, of course, if it's an emergency, 911. Email treatmentplant@oakharbor.org, if you'd like to get regular weekly updates on what's going on with the project, shoot an email off to that and say, please add me to the list. Next drop-in's May 23rd, second and fourth Monday of each month from 2:00 to 4:00. You get a great vantage point to look down and see the construction work going on if you'd like to stop by, we'd love to see you. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions, Council? Yes, Counselor Servatius.
Thank you. You said the northeast corner, they were building back up for the headworks.
No, it's, there's, the headworks has a shallow portion and a deep portion to it.
Okay.
So the shallow, the deep portion is what that pad was for, that was a little bit elevated off the floor. That's where the bottom of the headworks is going to be.
So it's not as deep as the Aeration Basins and some of the rest of that?
Exactly.
Okay, that was all.
Okay, anyone else? Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I went there yesterday by the City Beach Street, and it's a beautiful work of art by the Oak Harbor, Oak Harbor High School students, very pretty. And I used to see land on that excavation site, yesterday there was no land, it was so deep, I couldn't see anything from that street level. And then there's a berm that covered most of the northern part of the RV Park, it's about 10 feet high, that covered most of that area. Will that stay there, the berm?
No, it's, we'll use as much of that as we can back in the construction site, because we have to bring it back up to flood-proof the site. And whatever we don't use there, we'll use as, through the park integration plan as fill material. My intent is to not truck any of that off-site. It'll get spread around and we'll use it.
I see, so that'll become leveled off again.
Yeah, I thought, you know, it might be a good dirt bike park or something.
Thank you, Mr. Stoll.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you, City Engineer Joe Stoll.
All right, thank you.
I have one item for the mayor's report, and it is a thank you. Dear Mayor, we thank you, the city council, police department, and city public works departments for approving and participating in announcing the National Day of Prayer via the electronic messaging board at Vixma Park. The community event was a success and a blessing for the city. Sincerely, National Day of Prayer Committee. So now to council comments. Mayor Pro Tem, you have any?
No comment.
Okay, Counselor Campbell?
No, thank you. I only have one thing, the celebration that's supposed to be at the Regency. My apologies to the Fire Department and the Police Department, I will not be able to attend that, I'll be at Sea-Tac picking up my sister. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Muntz?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing is, thank you to the community for supporting Feed the Need, the big blue trailer that was down in the old Bergford area on Saturday, from 9:00 to 2:00, they collected cases of food or cash or whatever, and that will help us get through to Christmas in July. So anyway, but thank you, community, for supporting that, because people do need food every day. So thank you, that's all.
Counselor Almberg?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to notify the public that Mr. Nortier, who is our Executive Director at Island Transit, is settling into that job very, very well. We have a meeting Monday morning, anybody who is interested, please come. But I think that this organization is off to a really good start. is off to a really good start, and I'm hoping we have similar results as we did when he was at CEO of NAS Whidby Island. Thank you very much.
Great. Okay.
The meeting is at 9:30 at the Transit Office in Coopville.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Hyson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one request for staff, and Barbara Spawn, I was talking to her earlier, and I forgot to mention this, sorry. Mrs. Spawn has been with us for several months now, and I, for one, I'm really interested in who you've been talking to, and who your contacts are, and the plans and stuff that you're making. So, now that you've had a chance to settle in, and I've gotten to talk to her a little bit, you know, in her office, but if we could incorporate that into, like, maybe an update at a workshop or something, doesn't have to happen, you know, next week. But just at some point, I would, I'd like an update, because I'm, I was so excited when you came on board to hear all your ideas, so I would just love an update. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Wessner?
No comment tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. That's it, right? Got everybody? Counselor Servadius, did I forget you?
You didn't forget me. You saved the best for last.
Oh, there you go. Certainly wasn't on purpose.
Real quick, I had the opportunity since our last council meeting to meet with Rex Porter. He is a consultant that works with grants, with their compliance, specific, or predominantly, I think, with grant compliance, and got some ideas. He was fairly instrumental in helping Island County go through their entire LTAC process and rewrite some of those policies and procedures. And I contacted Mr. Merriman, so I'm going to review our, what we have, try and glean anything we can from Island County, and continue to work on improving our process to make it very thorough, very understandable, transparent, and in the end, the application and scoring process is very quantifiable. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We're on to number six, public hearings and meetings. And we have a Resolution 16-16, which is the 2016 surplus list enterprise funds. And I see we have our Public Works Director Kathy Rosen.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. As we're preparing for our auction, which will occur on June 11th, we need to have council formally take action to surplus items so that we can put them in the auction. RCW 3594-040 requires that the council hold a public hearing when surplusing property that was acquired with enterprise or utility funds. So, what you have before you tonight is Resolution 16-16, which will declare certain city property of the water, solid waste, storm drain, and/or sewer utility to be surplus property. The recommendation is that you open the public hearing, accept public testimony, and then adopt Resolution 16-16.
Okay. We'll do that public hearing right now. Is there anybody from the public that would like to, to come up and communicate about the 2016 surplus list? Going once? Twice? Okay. We'll come back to council. How would council like to handle this?
Thank you, Mayor.
Ombur?
I move that we approve Resolution 16-16 for the 2016 surplus list enterprise funds.
Second?
Motion by Councilman Ombur, and a second by Counselors Muntz, to approve the 2016 surplus list enterprise funds. Any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We are moving right along now. Our last, before our executive session, we're at number seven, ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 1767, Goldie Road Annexation Agreement Amendment.
Yes, good evening.
Mr. LeFevere.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The City of Oak Harbor adopted Ordinance 1574 in April of 2010, and that ordinance was an annexation ordinance for seven parcels totaling a little less than 17 acres on the north side of the city. In relation, this is 16th, Northeast 16th, and this is Goldie Road heading up this way. And as part of that annexation, the northern three parcels were zoned C3. The southern portion of that annexation was zoned planned industrial park. At that time, C3 permitted residential dwellings as part of the C3 developments. You could do a mixed-use development with residential on the upper floor of a retail establishment. During that annexation process, there was some concern raised from the Navy on the northern creep, so to speak, of the residential to the north. So, in support and response to that concern, this annexation, as part of the C3 properties, prohibited residential development. The associated annexation agreement that was part of the ordinance also prohibited the residential development on those three parcels. About the same time in 2010, and after the completion of the aircraft installation compatible use zones, also known as HQs, the city actually prepared and adopted Ordinance 1573, which established a firm line that prohibited, you know, that established a line to the north on where residential development could be allowed or permitted, not permitted. That ordinance created Northeast 16th as the line demarcating where residential development could be permitted to the south, and to the north, it would not be permitted. So, fast-forwarding to this day, we received a request from each of the property owners involved in that annexation, these three parcels right in through here that were zoned C3, requesting that we amend that ordinance 1573, or 1574, excuse me, to reflect the current zoning of C3, which allows residential development south of Northeast 16th. Staff is support of this ordinance amendment. It's a good move as far as economic, potential economic development is concerned for these three parcels, and it's consistent with our C3 current code as it's written, south of the Northeast 16th Avenue. And we also have confirmation that it's, this ordinance amendment is in support by the Navy as well. So, with that, I recommend that City Council approve this ordinance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Before we do that, we'll open this to the public, see if anybody's here that would like to have input at this, at this point? Going once? Twice? Okay. Back to the council. How would you like to proceed? Counselor Servadius?
Thank you. Question, and this might be a Mr. Powers question, but Mr. LeFevere, you might be able to take it. These were both approved at the same time, approximately, it looks like 1573 was on the 6th of April, and 1574 was on the 10th. My specific question is, I'm on page 62, 3, and 4, digitally of our packet, on printed number 170 at the bottom. It talks about the, if the city annexes the property, that the owners agree to make certain infrastructure improvements as set forth herein. I'll name some of those on page 63. I'm looking specifically at paragraph 5 and 6. They're talking about, within five years, all of the permits necessary, the sidewalks, et cetera. Has that been done?
I believe there was a subsequent ordinance that was passed that amended that section of the agreement. But Nikki?
This is actually the second annexation amendment to the annexation agreement. Last year, we amended the annexation agreement to allow for the improvements to occur as development occurs.
Okay. So, this no longer applies. That's been satisfied?
Correct.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilman Servadius?
Thank you, Mayor. Just backing up here in the packet. I move to adopt Ordinance number 1767, amending Ordinance number 1574.
Second.
Okay. Motion to adopt Ordinance number 1767, amending Ordinance number 7, or 1574, by Councilman Servadius, second by Councilman Ombur. That was a tie, but I'll give it to Ombur. Sorry about that. You'll get the next one. So, anyone, any other input, any questions? Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, council.
You, thank you. Mr. Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. Just a second. Yes, oh, Councilman Servadius.
We have a second item on there, too.
I also move to authorize the mayor to sign the second amendment to the annexation agreement.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion by Councilman Servadius, second by Councilman Ombur, to authorize the mayor to sign the second amendment to the annexation agreement. Any input or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you again.
Passes unanimously. We did it. Yes, Councilman Ombur.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, on our consent agenda, there was an inclusion in there that may have gotten overlooked about the appointment of Sharon Hall to the Arts Commission. And I'm curious if she is in this room today to be introduced. If she is, I would like to see her introduced. Is Sharon Hall here?
I don't believe so.
She's not? Okay. That's all. Thank you. Good point.
Yes. Okay. We are going into an executive session, and I think that we are thinking 25 minutes. And so, we will reconvene. No, of course, no decisions will be made, and we'll reconvene the meeting in 25 minutes.
That's so specific. My chair doesn't roll very good.
Okay. Like to reconvene the Oak Harbor City Council meeting, May 17th. We've been in executive session. No, no decisions are made in those sessions. And so, what would the council like to-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to make a motion.
Mayor Proton?
I move to authorize the mayor to execute the separation agreement and release regarding Ed Green as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion, a second, to authorize the mayor to execute the separation agreement and release regarding Ed Green as discussed in executive session. So, you've heard the motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Passes unanimously. And I think, yes, Councilman Servadius?
If there's nothing else, I'd move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.